Okay, if everybody can stand, please, if you can, for the National Anthem. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Before we start, CEO wants to just have a few words about what we're doing on the coronavirus. It's a very serious situation and we're on top. Hopefully, as a town council, we're very proactive and we're very involved. And hopefully, we can stay on top of it. So, Chris?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Three worship. So, we continue to monitor the situation and make decisions based on what is recommended by our local, provincial, and federal health authorities, as well as what's in the best interest of our staff members and our community. Administration is in regular contact with our local partners as we work together to respond to this crisis. We continue to urge our citizens to limit contact with others and stop all non-essential travel. While the risk in our region still remains low, the individual actions of all of us as a community will be critical to stopping the spread of the virus, in the cases it does appear. Our staff members continue to deliver the service that our community needs. We ask that, when possible, our citizens avoid visiting town facilities. We have a number of online services which can be found at essex.ca. Our staff are also available over the phone during regular business hours. That number again is 519-776-7336. For more guidance on what we, as individual members, can do to limit the spread of the virus, please look to the Windsor-Essays County Health Unit, as well as the provincial and federal health authorities. We're continually providing those updates on our website as well, so information is shared that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any conflict of interest amongst council members here tonight? Seeing none, we do have, Kevin, we do have a new employee. Is she here? If you'd like to introduce her, please.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Dean.[231.12][231.12](Laughter). Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Lindsey Dean, our last missing piece to the Infrastructure Services Department. Lindsey Dean is the new Drainage Superintendent for the Town of Essex. She has over 10 years of progressive municipal experience in municipal drainage. She has a Bachelor of Science and graduated with Honors in Biological Sciences and a Bachelor of Education, all from the University of Windsor. She's also served as both the Chapter One and Board Executive Secretary for the Drainage Superintendents Association of Ontario for a number of years. Please welcome me in, joining Lindsey to the Town of Essex team.
Welcome aboard. Thank you, Kevin, and welcome, Lindsey. Now, we'll move on to the adoption of published agenda, and I guess Rob would like to speak on notice motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of items this evening. At the request of the respective movers in Agenda Items 15.1.1 to 15.1.4, the first four notices a motion on tonight's agenda for consideration, the movers have asked to defer that to the April 6 meeting. Secondly, our second presentation this evening, Mr. Voges, who was scheduled to appear to speak to accessible parking spaces, has indicated he's unable to make it this evening, and he's indicated he will postpone his delegation to another meeting. And then, thirdly, we're asking council this evening to give consideration to the addition of a bylaw, Bylaw Number 1901, being a bylaw to appoint an acting Deputy Treasurer for the Town of Essex. We'd be looking to, administration would be hopeful that council could add that to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on any of this? Councillor Bjorkman.
It's a long ways away. I'm also going to ask to defer 15.1.5 for notice of motion.
Can you repeat that again, councillor?
Just asking to defer my notice of motion as well. The next meeting.
Yeah. Need a motion to adopt, please. Mover, councillor Van der Dolen and councillor Verbeek, all in favor? Skerry, thank you.
5.1 on the agenda, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held February 18th be adopted is circulated.
Have a mover, please, councillor Bjorkman and Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? Three, Mr. Mayor.
My apologies, that's a typo error on the agenda. It should be the minutes of March 2nd, 2020, the last regular council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
On the cover page, it says February 18th. It should be March 2nd.
Yeah, okay. Same mover and seconder there? Okay, all in favor? Skerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first and only public presentation this evening is Mr. Richard Wyman, General Manager and Executive Director from the Essex Region Conservation Authority. He's here also tonight with Tanya Jovan, Vice Chair, and they're here to present IRCA's 2019 Annual Report and their 2020 Executive Summary of the Budget.
Okay, Richard, anytime you're ready, you can start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. And I do apologize, our Vice Chair, councillor Jovan, is unable to attend with me this evening. She has recently travelled and so is at home currently while she works through that timeline. I want to begin, and I'll go through a couple of words, and then we'll show the video, and then I'm going to come back and speak about some of our actions in 2020. I'll start with a recall back into the 1940s, when forestry, agriculture, sportsmen, and community groups expressed concern that much of Ontario's natural resources was in an unhealthy state as a result of poor land, water, and forestry practices. These groups argued that the scale of the problem needed a new approach to how we were managing our natural resources, and the province listened. In 1946, the Conservation Authorities Act was passed, creating a tool that enabled municipalities in partnership with the province to establish a conservation authority with the mandate, quote, "to provide programs and services designed to further the conservation, restoration, development, and management of natural resources other than gas, oil, coal, and minerals." Today, not unlike the 1940s, we are again facing new and unprecedented challenges, and that mandate, or the objects of the authority, which has remained unchanged since the 1940s, is just as relevant. Indeed, as you'll see soon in our video, our region experienced the impacts of climate change perhaps more profoundly than any other in Ontario. We were under an extended flood watch from April until October, and communities across our region felt the devastating impacts of 15 separate flood events. Our agricultural patterns were shifted as a result of a wet spring. Roads, parks, and facilities were closed, new mosquito-borne diseases emerged, Lake Erie and Lake St. Clair both experienced severe harmful algal blooms, all of this obviously impacting our residents and our communities. And in the face of these challenges, our region responded. The City of Windsor and County of Essex and other municipalities endorsed a climate change emergency declaration. The Town of Essex as well put forward their own ECAT team to deal with the results or the outcomes of climate change. And we know that the problems that our region is facing, Great Lakes water quality, climate adaptation, land degradation, sustainable growth and development, and of course flooding and erosion are interconnected. So too are the solutions to these problems. Indeed, restoration, agricultural stewardship, protecting and monitoring the health of our Great Lakes, a coordinated approach to mitigating climate change, and a robust education outreach program, all delivered on a watershed basis are critical to building a healthy and sustainable community that is resilient to change. That message is consistent with what we heard during our recent strategic planning sessions, and our 2016 to 25 strategic plan guides us towards that goal. Our 2019 Annual Report, which I'll show briefly, highlights some of the successes we've had in response to these challenges, and I'll show it and then come back and speak about some of the actions we'll be taking in 2020. So, as mentioned, our strategic plan guides our actions in five key areas, and I'd like to highlight a few priorities in each of those areas for 2020. First, and as you saw in the video, we heard that the climate will continue to change, and we must prepare to adapt to its impacts. In 2020, we'll be working with partners in Windsor-Essays and Chatham-Kent to develop short and long-term plans to address the existing and expected impacts to our region as a result of current and future water levels, flood and erosion hazards, and climate change. This is further to a recommendation from the Provincial Flood Advisor and is captured in the recent Flooding Strategy. A first step is coordinating a regional hazard mapping, scoping, and prioritization program with municipalities, the City of Windsor and the County of Essex, and we'll be looking to start this work in the coming weeks. The Provincial Flooding Strategy, released last week in response to the Flood Advisor's report, recognizes the importance of a collaborative approach to managing flooding and associated risks. The strategy supports the need to update hazard mapping, which we all know informs policy and planning, hazard regulations, risk management, and emergency response. And we are hopeful we'll be able to partner with provincial and federal governments to undertake these needed updates. We were also pleased to see commitments to review and update provincial guidance and technical documents related to hazards, which we've been advocating for for some time. We also recognize the need to strengthen land use planning decisions and infrastructure, and the importance of maintaining wetlands, green infrastructure, and stormwater management. We look forward to working with the province and municipalities in advancing these efforts, but also recognize that collaboration can only work with funding supports from all levels, including the provincial government. In the same context, we'll continue to participate and assist in the development of shoreline management plans in Lake Shore, Leamington, and Tecumseh, and continue to lead the Little River Hazard Mapping Study at the request of the City of Windsor. Through the Windsor-Essays Climate Change Collaborative, we'll initiate a workshop series, which will include sessions such as corporate energy planning, asset management, stormwater financing, among other things that municipalities are addressing right now, as will they plan and prepare for climate change. And we certainly look forward to working with the Town of Essex on the development of the town's climate change adaptation plan to identify measures to improve adaptation, reduce vulnerability, and enhance community resilience. And at the request of the County of Essex, we've initiated the Essex County Regional Energy Plan, a long-term plan to support municipal efforts to better understand and manage local energy needs, identify opportunities for energy efficiencies, and better integrate energy needs into land use planning and economic development needs at a regional level. Second, we know that to keep our Great Lakes healthy, more must be done to improve the health of our watersheds. IRCA is an effective delivery agent in the Lake Erie Action Plan for Reducing Phosphorus, and will continue to develop and implement a regional phosphorus management plan and calculate phosphorus loading in the Leamington Tributaries, which are identified as priority watersheds under the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement. We continue to target high-priority restoration sites to meet our goal of 12% natural area cover, and we'll be planting over 80,000 trees in 2020. We will be expanding our water quality monitoring program with support from Soil and Crop, both the Essex Soil and Crop Association and Ontario Soil and Crop, through the On-Farm Program and Ministry of Environment, Conservation, and Parks, and with Agriculture Canada's Living Lab Program. Together, these projects will see, these programs, I should say, will see over 15 nutrient and soil health projects with the farming community. Our source water protection and risk management team will complete 45 risk management plans to address significant drinking water threats. This is a delegated role from municipalities. And with the Detroit River Canadian Cleanup, we'll continue to build on efforts to delist the Detroit River as a designated environmental area of concern, including completing the rehabilitation of a 70-acre wetland on the Canard River, and beginning the construction of the Pesha Island Erosion Protection and Fish Habitat Project with the City of Windsor, Swim Drink Fish, and Environment Canada. Third, we know that our landscapes and habitats are among the most significant in Canada, and more action is needed to protect them. The 2020 Budget restores more clean water green spaces acquisition funding to support securement of key lands with partnership funding in keeping with our land securement strategy. At the same time, we continue to invest in our conservation areas and greenways. Visitation to our conservation areas is growing, as people are increasingly aware that time spent in nature is vital to our physical, mental, and spiritual health. We also know, as demonstrated by the recent Amazon bid, and even what we hear from our own foundation corporate partners, that natural areas, trails, and open spaces are critically important to attracting and retaining economic enhancement. In 2020, enhancements to our conservation areas include road, parking lot, and facilities improvements at Holiday Beach, the construction of the pedestrian bridge to the Cypher Systems Group Greenway, and opening of a new community entrance to the Cypher Systems Group Greenway right here in Essex. Stay tuned for some additional announcement from our Foundation's Place for Life campaign. And of course, we'll be finalizing design and construction of the new Heritage Centre and shoreline protection at the John R. Park Homestead Conservation Area. I know several members of council were able to attend the federal announcement of $600,000 towards that centre, and the commitment from our foundation to match that funding. When I last checked, the SAP bucket at County Road 50 at the Homestead to date, we've confirmed over $900,000 of the $1.2 million needed for that centre. In 2020, our outdoor education program will also scale up our pilot Indigenous education program to all school boards in partnership with local First Nations, and will enhance our citizen science programs to meet regional environmental objectives. Fourth, we need to ensure communities grow and expand sustainably. In 2019, as shown in the video, we received over 1,300 Section 28 permit applications for stormwater management, commercial, industrial, and residential development, and large-scale greenhouses. Over 150 Municipal Drainage Act reviews, and we responded to 1,300 additional general water resource-related requests. We also provided advice and direction to municipalities on over 800 Planning Act applications. Those numbers put us on par with the Toronto Region Conservation Authorities with far less capacity, and we expect similar numbers in 2020. We report annually on our review timelines, and we have since 2010 included these in our Accountability Report section of our annual report, and we continue to show that we are meeting provincial timelines. Despite this increasing trend, as a high-growth conservation area, we initiated our new client services standards, and will be working with other conservation authorities in 2020 to further reduce timelines and improve clarity around our shared interests in plan input and review under the Planning Act, as an agency with provincially delegated responsibility for natural hazards, and as a municipal technical advisor. Finally, in response to discussion in 2019 around programs and services, we've heard from our board, municipalities, and residents that the work IRCA does is critical for our region. We will continue to engage in consultation with the province, municipalities, and stakeholders in the development of new regulations pursuant to the Conservation Authorities Act, to ensure that conservation authorities and municipalities can find the best local solutions to support community resilience. Part of this effort is to continue to encourage the inclusion of watershed resource management as a mandatory program to help achieve the Made in Ontario Environmental Plan actions for clean water, climate change resiliency, and conserving land and green spaces. I know the Town of Essex recently attended the multi-stakeholder consultation sessions in London where a lot of this was discussed. In 2020, we'll be reviewing the impact of these changes as part of the development of our new five-year sustainability plan, or what we call our business plan, to support initiatives identified in the strategic plan, and to ensure that IRCA has the appropriate resources and is managed in an efficient way to support the watershed and its municipal members' requirements. IRCA's 2020 Budget totals $10.5 million, which includes a total levy contribution of just under $3.4 million. This is an increase of $148,000 or $0.49 per person, though the actual cost per household is actually decreased by $0.12 to $19.57. The levy increase is primarily a result of the decrease in provincial funding for flood forecasting. There are no new FTEs included in this budget, and some staffing positions will remain unfilled. We are also looking internally to address capacity related to permit applications and demands on staff related to flood response. This places IRCA again in the top 10 of all 36 CAs in terms of programs and services, and at the same time, our levy funds only 40% of our operations, placing IRCA again in the bottom five of all CAs, well below the provincial average, which was 52% in 2018. While this demonstrates our organizational efficiency, it's only enough to maintain the status quo. We know more must be done if we want to significantly improve the health of our watersheds, reduce phosphorus and blue-green algae in our lakes, provide open spaces and trails that are accessible for people to use, connect and restore forests, wetlands, and habitats. These are essential for sustainable communities to build resilience to climate change, and importantly, attracting and retaining the talent this region desires and deserves. Sustaining the place for life is not our work alone. It's what we do together with municipalities, our neighbors, our universities and colleges, our donors, our local and regional agencies, our landowners, and the many other partners we work with. I would like to thank councillors Bowman and Van der Dolen for their active engagement on our board, and the Town of Essex for being a strong partner. We do value and appreciate that partnership, both at a political level and at an administrative level. We need to celebrate our success, but we also need to increase the scale, scope, and intensity of our joint efforts to create a place we can be proud of and celebrate, one that we can call home for life. So, I thank you for the chance to meet with you tonight, and I'm certainly happy to respond to any questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Richard. Before I open up the floor to council, I just want to ask you, okay, this shoreline protection and senior levels of government, I know you receive money for John R. Park, but what's going on with talks with senior levels of government for funding for shoreline protection? Are we there yet? I hear a lot of talk, I was in London for that conference in London, and there's always a lot of talk, but is there any commitment from the federal or the provincial government on funding for shoreline protection?
I don't know that there's a formal commitment yet. I do know that the federal government is looking at the next iteration of what is right now their National Disaster Mitigation Program. That's been under review since the election, and I know that they're looking at bringing out a successor program. I don't know what that program's going to be yet. The province, even in their flooding strategy, and I know this has been reported on, certainly has a lot of, shows a lot of support for the need to undertake flooding, but again, there was no commitments in the flooding strategy towards funding any of the implementation of those commitments. So, that's certainly something that we'll look forward to seeing. I know March 25th was supposed to be the budget. It's now a financial statement that's coming out from the province, but we certainly are encouraging the province and the federal government to come and support local actions. We know municipalities are prepared to take on what they're needing to do, but they need partners at both the federal and provincial level.
Thanks, Richard. I just want to say to our council, I'm pretty proud of our council for taking steps to help the residents with shoreline protection through all the hard work of Jeff, Jeff Morrison put that together with Libro, and it'd be nice, it'd be nice if the federal or the provincial government would come out with a program like that. So, I'm going to open it up to the floor. Is there any questions from council? Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming to see us, Mr. Wyman, and the presentation. I have to say that you say more words in a minute than, I don't know how you get those out there, but it transferred onto the video, and I couldn't read more than half the words on the video before the screen changed, so maybe for the, I know, so let them know, let that play out a little more, because there's a lot of good information on there, and I'm not able to pick it all up. I do, one of the things I want to talk to you about is permitting. We get a lot of feedback from residents, from builders, developers, with regards to permits in town and the time that they spend with IRCA. So, just as a statement, you know, looking at, do we have enough resources and staff to keep up with the requests for IRCA? There's a lot of pushback on towns, on organizations and stuff, that say, you know, we've got a lot of extraneous activities that we spend our time on, and we've gotten away from our core activities, and we're not putting enough of our resources and funding into that. So, just to ask you to that point, what is the position of IRCA as far as having applications that come in that are fully completed applications? And I understand there's a difference there. People sometimes put an application in, think, well, I applied, I've got 21 days, I should see an answer. I know there's a couple of things there, but to our own performance from IRCA, do we keep up to that mandated timeframe that we're expected to?
And the short answer to that is absolutely we do, and we do report on that as part of our annual report, and I think that's in your package tonight. The last section of the annual report is our Accountability Report, which describes our permit review timelines, as well as a number of other metrics that we measure on an annual basis. We were actually, I think, the second conservation authority in Ontario to begin undertaking that exercise. I borrowed that idea from Halton Region Conservation, and they did a great job, and we've done that and more. You're right, there are challenges with capacity and resources. I think I have the most, and I can say this definitively, I have the, no one else can meet what my team does. Our four people in Regulations dealt with 1,300 permits in 2019, as you described there. That's ridiculous in terms of how many numbers of permits those staff are able to deal with, and we did so in keeping with those timelines, and in keeping with a lot of the consultations and reviews back and forth with consultants around some of the requirements, whether it be engineering or planning, that are needed both from ourselves, as well as municipal exercises or municipal processes to satisfy permit requirements and to satisfy municipal and other requirements. So, there is always a lot of back and forth, and you're right, sometimes that back and forth doesn't always involve all of the players on the picture, and we try to communicate as much as we can with agents, certainly, and of late, we've actually started introducing or ensuring that owners of developments are also part of that review process, so that they're seeing the correspondence that's going out as well, just so that everyone is on the same page when it comes to that correspondence. The first part of your question in relation to, do we have capacity? No, we don't have enough capacity, as I said, experienced with the 1,300 permits, but the other part of that question that you asked is, what maybe you identified as extraneous, those are actually completely funded externally, for the most part. So, it's not an opportunity for us to take some of those dollars that are going to other projects and reallocate those funds to our regulations and permitting and planning processes, because those funds are tied to delivery of specific objectives under those programs. And like I said, a lot of that is through external and third parties. So, as I mentioned in my closing remarks, about 60% of IRCA's programs and services are funded through special grants and external supports. Those are the funds that support our water quality programs, that support a lot of our restoration initiatives, that support a lot of our monitoring programs and watershed programs. The levy funding that we do get is directed to a lot of those programs, like our regs and like our permitting, and in fact, you know, and again, in 2019, with 50% less dollars from the provincial government, from a flood response perspective, a lot of it had to go to offset that loss of revenue as well. So, you know, we do try, and we do try to ensure that we can balance municipal expectations as well, in terms of the amount of levy that goes into these programs, but as I said, over 60% of our budget is non-levy driven.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Richard. Councillor Van der Dolen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Welcome, Richard. Thanks for the presentation. One of the reasons I asked, I made IRCA the IRCA Board my top choice for committees to serve on was my love of the outdoors, particularly trees. I'm, like many people, I'm a tree geek, so I was, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the 55,000 trees that you planted last year, and the 80,000 you planted, you intend to plant this year. It's a little-known fact that it was the destruction of forests that was the main reason that Conservation Authorities were created in the 40s because of the mess we made of things in the 20s and 30s. So, if you could just tell us a little bit about where they're going and what kind, I know a lot of other people are interested in this, too. Thank you.
Thank you, and unfortunately, we didn't plant as many trees as we wanted to last year. Planting trees is kind of like farming, and when the weather doesn't cooperate, as it did with a lot of farmers, it also affected us, and so we planted less trees than we had hoped last year, and certainly our goal this year, weather permitting, is to get those 80,000 trees in the ground. Last year, as an example, we started a couple of new sites, including one that we call the Rotary Centennial Forest, which is located off of, is part of our Cedar Creek Land Acquisition or Land Holdings, I should say, outside of Cedar Creek, where it's a 70-acre parcel that we're actually planting with financial supports from every Rotary Club in Windsor-Essays that have contributed and committed. Essex, that have contributed and committed to providing support over three years to see 50,000 trees planted in that, in that 70 acres. So that's a project that we started last year and a project that we'll be continuing on this year in the Town of Essex, as an example. The types of trees that we plant are as much as possible trees that are collected from seeds that, or trees that are germinated, I should say, from seeds that we also collect. In the fall, we have a very aggressive seed collection program that we do, especially with a lot of our volunteer supports, that are available to help us collect and prepare the seeds that then go off into germination and to be dealt with through nurseries where they can best do that work for us, and then we get the results back a few years later in terms of the trees that we plant back in the ground. So about 80%, 70 to 80% of the trees that we plant come from stock, the genetic stock that we've collected from seeds. So the trees that we plant, from that perspective, then, are very native, not only native, but also native to the genetics of our region as well. You know, we've certainly found that our success rate, and we're around 80% of the success rate when it comes to our machine planting programs, 83%, and the reason we have such a high success rate is because we are planting that local genetic stock back into the areas that we plant. So we're very proud of that program, and certainly we monitor our forests and our plantations over the course of years. We also, part of the, part of the 80,000 trees are trees that we acquire, and then we basically do so in conjunction with farmers or landowners that do trees on their own property. So we don't all plant, we don't plant all of the 80,000 trees. A lot of those trees are actually given to landowners to plant themselves, and that's part of our overall program as well, but even those trees are, again, native, and the range of oaks, the range of maples, you know, hackberries, shrubs that we have, dogwoods and viburnum and other species like that that we plant back in our landscape.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Richard Wyman, our CEO of IRCA. The one notice of motion that I was hoping to be on our council agenda tonight was Counselor Bjorkman's notice of motion, where we were talking about, you know, the Town of Essex and our possible potential donation to your new center, and I think that that's something I hope this council does talk about sooner rather than later, and I do think it's going to be part of our support in helping making you more sustainable and in helping to fight some of the challenges that you see. I was on the IRCA Board from 2010 to 2014, so I do see how you are proving to be resilient and innovative in going forward and promoting conservation to our, to our youth in our community, and that's where we really need to, I think, focus a lot of our bang for our buck. So, you know, there's been some people that said, you know, why, why, you know, why would you want to give taxpayer money there? And I think, well, you know, I think if IRCA was to walk away from John R. Park Homestead, where would we be then, right? Like, that is such a historical museum and such a diamond in our municipality, and I want to see it thrive, and I want to see it continue, and I know that people I've been talking to in their 50s have said, you know, I went there as a kid in school, and I still have memories, you know, they tried to tie me down in the seat in the classroom, and I never learned anything, but when we went there, I learned something. So I just want to say that I appreciate everything you're doing during these trying times. You know, we thought 2019 was going to be very trying, but I have a feel, feeling that 2020 is going to be just as trying, and I hope, despite everything that's going on, the donations still come forward, and I look forward to that conversation, Counselor Bjorkman, around this table.
And just if I may, quickly, and I'm happy to return when you do have that discussion, and I know that we had, or there were others that were planning on being here this evening as well to participate in that discussion, and I'm sure they'll be prepared to come back and be part of that discussion as well. So when it is on the agenda next, by all means, we'll be there as well for a discussion.
Thank you, Richard. Anybody else from council? I need a motion to receive the presentation, please. Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Van Endel. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much, and keep up the good work, Richard.
Reports from administration, item eight on tonight's agenda. 8.1 Corporate Services: Statement of Remuneration and Expenses 2019, as per Section 284 of the Municipal Act, for receipt this evening.
Need a motion to Counselor Bjorkman and Deputy Mayor Malas. Any questions? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you over there to our Director of Corporate Services. Thank you for sending the last couple of years of comparisons, and if we just take my wages alone, going from 2015 to 2019, there is an increase of $2,500, and I know that we had the one-third tax-free, you know, money come in to make up for that, but really, I really don't care about the one-third, because to me, other people that get paid don't get one-third of their income tax-free. I don't, I think it's a very small percentage of people that ever get to write one-third of their tax, of their income off. So can you explain, just at high level, if you can, how the $2,500, like, where did that come from? Do council wages increase as part of, let's just say, like, similar comparisons to QP increases, like, to our union increases, or was a majority of that from the one-third? That's my first question.
Through the chair. Got a little bit of feedback on this mic, but, so council wages are tied to the increase that non-union union would get, so if there's a 1.5% increase in the last collective agreement, council wages would be tied to that. However, the majority of the impact, as you summed up, is related to the removal of that one-third. The specific amount, I'd have to go back and pull that report and get it, so I'd have to get back to you on that, but I don't have that readily available.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, as part of my second question, one of the conversations that have come up in the past is wages associated with attendance at meetings. You know, Police Service Board, you go to the meeting, you get paid. Committee of Adjustment, when council members were on there, you go to the meeting and get paid. Elk is one of the boards that, we've been told that the per diem for Elk is set here at the council chambers. So I wasn't sure if that was something you were aware of and if that's true. For example, because if you go to an Elk meeting, or if you don't go to an Elk meeting, you still get paid. So in theory, you could miss three Elk meetings and still get paid. And so when it was, been brought up before, it said that the Town of Essex sets the money for Elk. So I just wanted to verify that here, that we set out how much our Elk directors get paid, and that we set out whether they miss meetings or not that they get paid.
Through the chair. I will have to look into that and get back to you. I'm not aware of the answer right now. I've been here eight years, and I have not encountered that topic, so I'll have to research it and get back to you.
Anybody else? Counselor Van Endel.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out that the so-called increase is very misleading, because when one-third of $18,000 or $19,000 is tax-free, that's about $6,000. If it's tax-free, that means it's actually worth about $10,000 in real buying terms. And then when you now tax it, most of the people around this, around this table are probably paying, well, you'd have to think in terms of marginal taxation, which is the last dollar you earn, and it'll be over 50%. So that $6,000 is now worth about $2,800. So you go from having $10,000 in your hand to having $2,800, which is an $8,000 loss, or $7,200. So replacing it with a $2,500 increase, you're only getting, we only got back a third of what was taken away in terms of the new taxation rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malas.
Thank you, through your worship. I'll bring up another point here, just looking at the T4 that I received for being Deputy Mayor for the Town of Essex over the last, for 2019 as opposed to 2018. The net difference between the two, I've made $2,000 less in 2019 than I did for the same role that I had in 2018, based on what I paid in taxes versus what I was actually received as income. I wanted to go back to ELK for a minute, too. The ELK monies that we get for sitting on that board is an annual per diem. It's not per meeting diem, so we'd have to change, if we wanted to change how it's going to be paid out, we'd have to look at that as well. I personally sit on the Finance Committee, I've sat on the Finance Committee, I think, for the two terms that I was on before this term, and I don't receive anything additional for being on the Finance Committee. We have about maybe a half dozen meetings a year, but I have those meetings as well, and I don't get paid an extra per diem. What I was told the per diem is, just it's an annual per diem, and they just happen to split it up and pay you 12 times a year. So I just thought I'd point that out. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malas. Anybody else from council? I'll say one thing before we go to the motion, is other municipalities pay, pay their counselors for different meetings where, where they sit on different meetings. We don't get paid for some of those meetings. So Counselor Bondi, you know, I know you brought this forward, but back in the days, when this motion was brought forward, or this issue was brought forward, Counselor Bondi, by our CEO at that time, you're the one that made the motion to follow through on this one percent, or one-third of our tax. You're the one that come up with the motion, now you're bringing it forward. It's very disappointing, Counselor, so I'll leave it at that. All in favor of your report? Receive it, please. I need a motion, receive it.
So we have a motion.
Yeah, all in favor? It's carried.
8.2 Economic Development Report 2020-02: Rebuilding Report and Development Overview for the Month of February 2020, for receipt this evening.
Need a mover, please. Counselor Van Endel, a seconder. Counselor Darren. Any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
8.3 Infrastructure Services Report 2020-01: Rep proposal for Engineering Services: Harrow Center Streetscaping, and this is together with the request to council to waive requirements pursuant to Section 22 of the procurement bylaw, for receipt, and that council appoints StanTech Consulting to provide engineering services to design, assist in procurement, and administer said project.
Need a mover, please. Counselor Verbeek, a seconder. Counselor Bondi, any questions? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our CAO and I think our new Director of Infrastructure. Just something that came up at the roundtable, and I just wanted to raise it again, because it's about the Harrow streetscape. We talked about possibly aligning the parking on the south side of King Street to the north side, and then, Mr. Nepsi, you brought it up, that it wouldn't align through town, but from Roseborough, because I drove, like, if you drive from the beer store in town, it does a zig. So it actually, if you're driving from, say, I don't know, see, the hardware store right into town, if we moved the parking, it would actually be one straight line, because right now it zigs like this. Just something, just something I wanted to bring up again, before the engineers have everything engineered, is something that they could look at while our director is here, and Chris can fill you in on what I'm talking about. If not, I can meet you somewhere. Yeah, it zigs.
Anybody else? All in favor? It's carried.
8.4 Development Services 2020-01: Re-Infill Residential Development, and for this report this evening, Mr. Chair, we have a presentation by Ms. Chadwick, our Director of Development Services.
Thank you. Anytime you're ready, Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through, through you, as well as to the rest of council and other individuals that are interested, that may be here, that may be viewing through our streaming, through streaming purposes, I wanted to start out with explaining to council why we're here and why this presentation is, is, is being presented to you. So taking us back to December 2nd of the, of 2019, at a regular council meeting, there was a resolution set forth, where, the number's up on the screen, 19-1242, where administration was directed to provide council with a report on infill residential development opportunities within the Town of Essex. As a part of the report, council directed us to take a look at the potential cost to ratepayers on eliminating development charges as incentive. So going back to that meeting in December, it was, it was as a result of a delegate that had come forward, Mr. Oakley, and it turned into a, an opportunity for us to take a look at what we're doing at the Town of Essex and what we can do to incentivize infill residential So first and foremost, we need to describe what is infill residential development. An infill lot is specifically an existing lot of record on an available parcel of land located between existing homes on a street having municipal surfaces deemed to be suitable for residential development. An infill house is a dwelling constructed on an infill lot to replace a demolished dwelling or to occupy a lot not previously built on. So it's our cookie-cutter definition of an infill residential development, or sorry, infill residential lot. It is a vacant lot in an established neighborhood and with the potential to be developed for residential purposes. We're going to get into some details on what this means, what our inventory looks like, but I'd like to start out in describing some key points on why the municipality, in our opinion, should encourage residential, or rather, infill residential development. Number one, we feel that it helps to meet housing targets by providing another option for builders to, to develop residential dwellings. It also provides an optimum use of municipal services. Again, in established neighborhoods, you have the opportunity to tap into services, roads, road sewers, water, where existing on those, on those streets. It reduces the consumption or conversion of land for large-scale subdivisions, so what we know as that kind of the greenfield development, those large tracts of land for, you know, the 50-unit subdivisions or the 500-unit subdivisions, that's what, that's not what this is, but rather, it reduces the consumption to do that type of development. It rejuvenates existing older and/or bladed neighborhoods. So this is something where maybe you've seen five vacant lots in a, in a established neighborhood, infill residential allows us to rejuvenate that existing neighborhood. And then finally, it could provide more attainable housing options. I wanted to touch base on that word attainable housing, and something that, maybe you've heard the term, I wanted to be able to describe that to you and to others, in members of the public. Attainable housing is, straight, you know, straight black and white, is modestly priced new-for-sale homes. Affordability challenges in the existing real estate market have resulted in the disappearance of attainable housing, which is, again, modestly priced new-for-sale homes. Attainable housing is important because it is geared to people with moderate incomes who are, who are having or maybe having a difficult time entering the housing market due to what we know as a growing affordability gap. So these individuals are at a disadvantage because often, they don't qualify for something that we also know as affordable housing, subsidized, or geared to income. So they make too much for affordable, the clear definition of affordable housing, but not enough to purchase their first home or start a home for their young family. So due to their income, they may not be eligible for affordable housing options, as we know in the government, what is defined as affordable, but attainable is that modestly priced new-for-sale So what is included in this review, tonight's review of infill residential? Number one, lots that are ready to build. We are calling these the green lots. These are ready to build any day now. Number two, we're also taking a look at, in this review, lots that are constrained by zoning. We'll explain those. There aren't very many opportunities within the town for these types. This is the, the orange zone we're looking at. And then finally, lots that are constrained by services. So these may be So these may be constrained by roads or constrained by water or sanitary services. So we'll go through those opportunities as well. We want to clear the air in what we are not including in this review. So what is excluded from this review? So in addition to what you see in front of you, not only are we excluding in this review lands with potential large scale plans of subdivision, we are also excluding the adaptive reuse of unoccupied structures for residential purposes. This, you know, that would be a wonderful opportunity to take a look at those. Unfortunately, it's just not a part of this review. What we also wanted to delineate, which you don't see up in front of you, is that this review also excludes lots that could be created through consent to sever, which is a smaller scale, excuse me, smaller scale subdivision of land. So those consent to severs opportunities are not included in this review. And finally, any potential lots or lands that are regulated through ERCA under what we know as the restricted for development zone, which is in our official plan, in our zoning bylaw, we would restrict that development regardless. We're not looking at those infill opportunities either in this review. So going to the first type, our green type, are ready to build. I'd like to describe to council on what that looks like. It's what we know, you know, it's what we might know as the most commonly used, excuse me, most commonly known and understood type of infill residential. It's an independent, it's independent of any abutting lot. It has the proper zoning in place for residential development, and it has municipal services available. So this example in front of you is a lot in Essex Center. It is a freestanding lot that is currently zoned as residential or 1.1. It permits single detached dwellings with an accessory dwelling unit, which you know as our secondary suites or secondary dwelling units. And it is suitable size for semi-detached dwelling if rezoned, sorry, if, which it is, zoned to permit one. Oh, sorry. If, so of suitable size for a semi-detached if rezoned. So in other words, this one is currently only open for single detached. The second type, which we know as the orange type, these are infill lots that have access to full municipal services but are constrained by zoning classifications. So this example here, and there are very few opportunities within the municipality that fall into the orange, we'll get into the numbers in a moment, but that this particular example is in Essex Center. It's currently zoned as C2.2, which is a commercial district. It is not permitted at this time for residential development, but the constraints in it is that it's also not large enough for a proper commercial site. So we get into this position where could it be, and we have heard from the property owner, could it be rezoned for townhouse units? And in fact, would be suitable for townhouse units. So that's one of our types that we're looking at. And then finally, the third type, which is our blue type, these infill lots are appropriately zoned for residential development but are constrained by municipal services. So here in front of you, you have a few examples of unserviced roads in the Colchester Center down in the south where lots are developable. In other words, they are lots on record, but that they are unable to obtain a building permit because there are currently no roads or services to those lots. So we'll get into those examples, or rather into those numbers as well. Okay, this is the part of the presentation where I'm going to ask for your patience as I flip to our wonderful GIS map, which our GIS technician Kevin Huff has so graciously worked with planning and well, within the Department of Development Services, but especially alongside our planners. Kevin Huff has created for us a visual. I'll be able to jump from settlement area to the maps to be able to showcase what our review entailed. So color coded and everything. So the first center, or rather the first, the first type of infill development in our Essex Center, we see a number of, so and this is something I'd like to explain, the number of parcels in comparison to the number of dwelling units. So we've taken a look at the green, ready to build. We see 24 opportunities in Essex Center. In the orange constrained by zoning, we see three parcels with a potential of five dwelling units, and we don't see any in Essex Center that are constrained by services. So jumping to Essex Center, you'll see, you know, we can zoom in, we can take a look at real time on what's out there. This is a real inventory of our opportunities within the town, sorry, within Essex Center's settlement area. Jumping to our next settlement area, which is Harrow Center, we have not as many opportunities as in Essex Center, but we do have five, sorry, four ready to build parcels and potentially five dwelling units. So jumping to our map for that, I do want to note that in Harrow Center, we may have even other opportunities. So and these numbers are, I would like them, I would like you to consider them as conservative. We certainly can take a look at, you know, expanding the review and just, you know, drilling down, but this is a few months of work, so we are quite confident in these numbers, but this is still approximate. The settlement area boundaries were here, and I apologize that you don't see that in our layers. Yeah, the settlement boundary is on. Okay. Next center is, or settlement area rather, is our McGregor Center. So not many opportunities here in comparison to Essex Center either, but we do have one parcel with the potential of two dwelling units in the form of infill residential in McGregor. So jumping to our map, we're able to identify again where in McGregor that lot is situated for the potential for infill residential. What am I, we do have the aerial that I can put on as well to be able to do that, too. Next up, we have Colchester Center. So Colchester Center, we have quite a bit of opportunity, and I'd like to chat a little bit more about Colchester Center. So a number of parcels, a huge number of dwelling units, in a total of 70 dwelling units that we see as potential for Colchester Center. The settlement area boundaries for Colchester Center are within the village itself. So if you follow my cursor, it's just within here. Jumping to what the official plan calls Lake Shore Residential, which we may know more as County Road 50 West. Correct? County Road 50 West? Okay. So this is a settlement area in our official plan. It is deemed suitable for residential growth, and so we don't have, we don't want to exclude it. The name is Lake Shore Residential. I hope it isn't too confusing, but that is the name of our settlement area. Again, many opportunities here, so let's take a look at the numbers just quickly. So again, 70 dwelling units potentially in Colchester Center, County Road 50 West. We have 26 units that are also available for development. Now, when we go to our total, we go and we see that the ready to build, so let me just jump now to current slide. Ready to build, constrained by zoning, constrained by services. Our review has shown that the Town of Essex has the potential to develop 132 infill dwelling Moving forward in our presentation, I'd like to chat with you about how the Town of Essex can encourage and/or incentivize infill residential development. So we talked about waiving development charges. Bringing forward to you tonight, the potential cost that could ensue if all 132 units were developed, the potential to incentivize through development charges requires a few things. As you know, as council, you're required to complete an amendment to waive any development charges through an amendment to the DC bylaw. That is a public process, which includes releasing a background report to the public, holding a public meeting two weeks after the background report has been made public, and then finally, holding a council meeting 60 days after the background report has been made public to make a decision on that amendment. So what does that look like? Bearing in mind, there are different development charges for different centers, we took a look at the number of units, and we did a calculation on full development charges and what that could potentially cost the Town of Essex if that incentive is out there to waive. I'd like to point out that, if my cursor, maybe not, but that 1.3 million in full development charges for 132 dwelling units is the worst case scenario, meaning we don't have any way of knowing whether all 132 dwelling units will be developed. And we don't know when all 132 dwelling units could be developed. So it could be one year, 132, it could be five years, it could be 10 years, and you could even potentially put a timeframe. We could even look at, for example, a program where we would incentivize for a certain number of years, or, you know, first come, first served. Maybe you only want to incentivize a center or two. It's really up to you. This is the data. So again, 132 dwelling units, 1.3 approximately in full development charges. That includes hard and soft services. How else can we incentivize, encourage infill development? We can do that through the rezoning of application fees. So earlier, we talked about that orange type. The orange type, we only had three potential parcels for a total of five dwelling units, and those would be constrained by zoning. So the rezoning application fees are in the amount of 7,740. That potentially again could be waived. Would it be done over the counter? No, it would be done through an amendment to the planning fee schedule, or it would be done through an individual basis through council. How else can we incentivize or encourage infill residential? Through adoption of a local improvement petition policy. This is something similar to a, and I look to our CEO to help me with this term, a local improvement for Drainage Works, very similar in nature, where property owners would petition the town to install missing municipal services. These types of petitions would require 50% of property owners along any street owning 66% of the street frontage to enter into that, and that would offset those costs for municipal services, roads, water, et cetera. The financial considerations for this is that although funded by property owners, the allocation of capital funds would be required upfront to undertake that work. And finally, how else can we incentivize and encourage educating and communicating? We have 132 dwelling units, and I can't tell you why they haven't developed. Well, I could tell you with some of them, being the blue, you know, there aren't any services available or roads, but I can't tell you why the green aren't developing. Could we have public information, open houses? Could we do drop off information, direct mail, where I, you know, encourage those individuals to say, you know, this property is prime property for residential? Could they be, for example, properties that are owned by an estate of a property owner that has passed on or moved out of Essex, the Town of Essex? I don't know why these properties are still vacant or are not developed. We could also proceed with sharing information through social media, through our word of mouth, through at council as well. So there are opportunities for us to educate and communicate to the public. Financial considerations for this would certainly be staff time as well as our staff resources. So let's reflect. You've seen some financial impacts, but you've also seen and perhaps heard that there is what we know as the missing middle and the affordability gap. Does providing housing options for a segment of the population that may be constrained by rising housing prices and rental costs incentivize you? Well, it definitely incentivizes the Development Services Department. We know the missing middle. We know it very well, and we have done quite a bit to, you know, to be ready for high density development through the form of rezoning and getting our greenfield lands ready for development. We have done quite a bit with our development charges to incentivize, but is this something that you can do to take a look at that missing middle? The, again, those properties that may be ready and available and attainable housing options? Again, that desire to live in established neighborhoods. We saw it a few weeks ago when we were at the public open house for the rezoning of the Johnny Estates lands. The desire to live in an established neighborhood and be able to walk to the pharmacy or walk to the grocery store or walk to the arena or the community center or the library. So that desire is there, and I wish I would be able to do the same thing and not rely on the car so much. Optimum use of municipal services. Even those blue lots, the blue lots that we have, that we've identified, the services are there, they just need to be tapped into those properties that are ready to develop. And then finally, I'd like us to reflect on the significant large number of potential infill opportunities in Colchester Center and County Road 50 West. Just a quick count of the 132 units. Colchester and Lake Shore West, or County Road 50 West have 112 alone. So we have plans to boost commercial development opportunities in Colchester. We have a Colchester secondary plan that we're going to reopen up and take a look at. We have an opportunity to bring in more development opportunities in that district. And so could we tie incentives to promote residential growth in line with our vision for commercial growth as well? Could we bring in our economic development officer to take a look at that commercial growth at the same time as our residential growth alongside our planning division? We certainly could. And that's it for me. I'd love to hear from you as council and mayor.
Thank you, Laurie, for the presentation. Very, very good presentation. Questions? Counselor Garen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Laurie, thanks for your presentation. It was awesome. It's nice to see there's opportunities for some of these people that have some lots. Just can you go to the Ward 1 map that you had shown? I have questions about the former subdivision I used to live in, which is across the street from where we are right now. I don't know what it's called today. It was at one time, I think Bridlewood or CAW. You showed some lots in there, I believe, too?
Is, sorry, is this, I'm just giving.
That's the right one.
This is the right one? Okay.
Down near the bottom, all the green that seems to be.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that that subdivision that was?
I want to pull up the aerial, and again, bear with me as I pull up the aerial. Oh, there it is. Okay, so these lots, I believe, are owned by a housing corporation?
Right.
Okay. So it would be wonderful to be able to work with these, with the owner of the lands or the land lease landlord, to be able to develop these lots. I don't know why they're still vacant.
So my question is, because they were previously built on, they're still subject to the development charges?
At this time, yes.
Okay, and we've had no contact with the property owner with what their plans are with it? If they're going to be, there was some talk that they were not going to sell those lots, and they were open to build semis on and stuff like that. Have you heard anything to that?
No, not at all, Counsel Garen. We have not had contact, nor have we heard from the building division if there are any building permits that are currently in the midst.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through your worship, to Dr. Chadwick. So thank you for the report. This is a pretty interesting report. One of the things, the ways that I look at it is that each one of these new homes that we would build or the developers would build would be probably worth, I would say, a minimum of $200,000 as far as extra valuation from impact. So on a $200,000 home, I think I can safely say that we'd probably get about $2,000 worth of property tax in a year. And probably Mr. Morrison would be able to confirm that.
Through the chair. Close.
Okay, so let's just say roughly, let's just say roughly $2,000 a year. If we were to give back all of the development charges, and I'm not suggesting that we do all of it, I've got an idea on that as well, but. all of it, I've got an idea on that as well, but on 132 homes, if we were to collect $2,000 a year, we'd have the money back in seven years. The money that we're giving it back as far as development charges. My suggestion would be that we give the town-wide development charges back, and at the same time, use it as a loan, giving back those development charges, so that the taxes that come back from those lots over the seven years, we go back to pay off that loan. So we don't spend it in general funds, that money, but that money, we go back to pay the money. I'm trying not to lose everybody here, but... So if we had a loan for 1.3, or 1.4 million, let's say, we would get $2,000 a year once the house is developed. In over seven years, we'd collect the 1.4 million or 1.3 million dollars, and that money, the first 1.4 million dollars that we collect on property taxes for those new developments, 132 lots, go back to pay against the loan that we said we would throw in the money for on development charges. And that's if we do the full 1,000, 1,372,000, or whatever it was. What I would suggest is that we only give back development charges on the town-wide development charges, and that water and sewage, we still remain to collect. And there's a lot of reasons why I think that we would want to do it that way. We've got a lot of projects in water and sewage, and I don't think it's fair just to put that on the onus of the persons that are paying for a particular service within the town. Not everybody pays towards those services. I think over the long run, it gives us the ability to have, collect more taxes quickly, more upfront. I think all of these properties may, at some point in time, over 20, 30 years perhaps, will be infilled, but if it's a project or something that we see as a council that we want to have done quicker, this is an opportunity, I believe, to try and have some revenue earlier rather than later and get these infills done. I do believe Ms. Chadwick had a good point as far as people wanting to live where the services are, and particularly the ones in Essex Center, Harrow Center, McGregor Center, and Colchester Center. That is just a gem down there with the harbor and whatever else is going on. And I can see the attraction that people would have to living in Colchester as far as having the harbor, the park, and everything else that's going on down there. So, and even along Lake Shore County Road 50, those homes because of being the proximity to the lake. So I think this is a golden opportunity for us, but I'd like to hear what other councillors have to say on it as well. We could put a time limit on it, as far as I'm concerned, that we may say that we only want to do it till the end of this term of council. So they'd have the next two and a half years to take advantage of this, and then we'd leave it up to the next council, perhaps, to decide whether they want to extend it past those dates. But at least it would give us a jumpstart on this to try and get as many filled within the next two and a half years. And if developers want to take advantage of maybe gaining $6,000 to $10,000 for each of these, developing each one of these lots, this is an opportunity for them to do it in the next two and a half years to try and gain that advantage. And then they'd be taking a chance, if they wanted to wait longer, as to whether the next council would want to extend the program or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Van Endel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thanks for the great report, Laurie. That was really informative. There's a lot to meet there, a lot of stuff to chew over. I find myself in rare disagreement with my friend, Counselor Maloche. 1.3 million is a lot of dollars for us to give away, and, or a lot of dollars to give up. I mean, that would be a couple of major road projects, especially if we give it up and we don't really have to. And I don't think we, we may not, we may not have to. Because if you look at this report in conjunction with the one we passed a few minutes ago on the development report, we just had a fabulous, a fabulous development month. You know, we've got like almost $6 million worth of homes went into construction last month. It's an increase of something crazy, 1,900% or something. In the past four days, 11 new basements were just dug just west of Hanlon, you know, full development charges. We didn't need to incentivize those. And we've got a lot more lots coming. I think that maybe Essex is time, like developers are starting to turn towards us now and away from our neighbors. I think, I don't know why, but there's a growing realization about what a great place this is to live. Maybe it's our tax structure, who knows? But if people are building houses, we don't need to incentivize it, because that means that that cost is transferred to the other taxpayers, and it's being transferred away from the wealthiest society, the landowners, to people who generally are less wealthy. And I think we should especially hold off on incentivizing construction in Colchester and the Lakeview area, because I think a major reason why we don't have building there is the lack of good internet. And that's going to change in the next couple of years. It's going to change with more radio towers, with more fiber, with more satellite. Because if you were going to sink $400,000 to $600,000 to do a new house, would you put it on a lot where you didn't have good access to television, entertainment, and the internet? You wouldn't. I'm pretty sure that's a major reason why we've got so many of those lots begging for a house. And my final thought is that there's one more way we could incentivize, and that's not giving up the development charges, and that's giving them the opportunity to put in a little bit more density, to put in duplexes or fourplexes on some of these properties. I know we'd have to be careful with that, because we wouldn't want to anger existing homeowners. It would have to be the right kind of lots we do that. But if you allow somebody to build a couple of units instead of one, I'm sure that would, and then, but still pay the development charges, I think that would incentivize the use of some of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else?
If I can just say to Counselor Van Endel, we were called by a group of people, Nagorski family, and they're anxious to see the town of, or the village of Colchester to be rezoned commercial. And I think that that alone is going to draw a lot of residential growth into that area. So I know administration's working on that right now, and it's just too bad we couldn't speed it up a little bit, because there is people really waiting for that to be rezoned, and I'm sure there's people ready to put the shovel in the ground and go to residential homeowners and ask for the sale of their house. So I think I agree with both of you. I agree with what you're saying, Counselor, and I agree with what Deputy Mayor Maloche is saying also, but I think the first thing, the first step is to get Colchester Village rezoned, rezoned commercial, and that residential growth is going to come. We all can see how well Colchester's done in the last two to three years. We've done some great things down there, and there's people moving in from the city out to that area. I've talked to different people that's very interested in moving out there. But, you know, I think the first step forward here is to get that village rezoned, rezoned commercial, and I think the residential growth is going to come. But as far as infill, we have to move forward with the infill. There's a need, okay? But what type of homes are we going to allow to go in there? And I agree with Counselor Van Endel. Are we going to allow fourplexes and duplexes, you know, is it going to fit in to the area out there with the neighbors? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Chadwick, for the report. It was really good and really thorough. One thing we didn't touch on a little bit is, I really like the idea of infilling. I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense in so many ways, maybe not, you know, giving away all of the development fees, but encouraging it somehow. Was there any talk of, you know, if it's zoning, if it's zoned already for a duplex, was there any talk about, I think, one of the situations when we're talking infilling is how do we encourage intensification, right? If we could get a single-family house, or if we can get a duplex? You know, I think developers will pay one set of development fees for the single-family house, but they want that for the duplex. So was there any mention of that? Because I think that that's something that maybe we can do easily, more easily, and encourage some of these opportunities to have two homes. Like, we can get two families in there for the price of one. We, I know the building report is very favorable, but with everything that's going on right now with this virus, I believe we could be in for a little recession, a little downturn in the housing market. I don't know. I'm not a fortune teller, I can't say, but I do know that housing is a big issue. I was notified last night at 11 o'clock that there is a man in my ward living in a car. So, you know, that is the reality. It is coming. The housing crisis is here. It's in our municipality. So what can we do for this missing group, and what can we do to make a duplex is really what people want now? You talk about the Larry Pollard or the Anderton Development in Harrow. People are like, when can we get in here? People don't want a big house. People don't want a big yard. People want a two-bedroom house with a garage. They want easy, low-maintenance housing. How can we provide that? So I think that that's kind of what I was looking for in there, you know, one set of development fees for a duplex. So I don't know if you have anything to say on that?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Bondi, and as well as Counselor Van Endel, because they have very similar comments, and thank you to the rest of council this evening for your comments. But to answer specifically about, have we looked at incentivizing through intensification? The answer is, we've considered it. However, it isn't a part of this review because the zoning constraints that we have in some of our established neighborhoods. And so where you've seen in Essex Center or in Colchester Village, where a property is green and ready to build on, those properties are ready for residential, excuse me, a single-family dwellings. Could we look at what it might mean to rezone and allow for a duplex or semi-detached? We could. We do run into those, you know, the, on one hand, it's intensifying and it's, you know, using land in an established neighborhood and using that, those municipal services that are readily available, but on the other hand, you have, the character of the neighborhood may all be single-family residential. And so we do get into those questions. It would require a public process to rezone those lands one at a time. Do we recommend a blanket rezoning? Not at this time.
Thank you. To follow up, what about those that are already rezoned?
To allow for singles, semis, or multi?
Like, for those, there are maybe only two or three, but there are some that are zoned to allow a semi-detached that are just waiting to see what we're doing, right?
And we could, through you, Mr. Mayor, we could certainly look into adding that as a part of our review. We've looked at, you know, several types, going back about a month ago, in reviewing this with my counterparts on senior administration. We took out many types that we needed to narrow down the scope of this project. We can certainly open it up and come back to the drawing table to add that type of review. We can call it, you know, purple, whatever. But we can take a look at that, but that is not a part of this review at this time.
Counselor B. Artman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and all of your presentations. Thank you very much for all the work there. It's a great report. Now, this all did get generated by a meeting that we had with a developer who was looking to put a duplex, two-unit property on a single piece of land. So this infill, this idea of the infill was to see how much could we do then, what could we do for people looking to do that kind of work? I do like the idea of incentivizing, just to the point of, right now, we are getting a lot of developers coming to us. We are getting a lot of development, but bigger development. We're not getting those individual infill pieces, and I think it just highlights more that this is something else we want to attract. And if we are going to go into a recession, if there is, people worried about what's happening with the economy moving forward, let's keep them looking at Essex and keep them looking at Colchester and looking at Harrow, and spending their money and doing their building here. So I think that helps us. I agree with the Deputy Mayor that it needs to be something that's timed. I always think when you put something on sale, at some point in time, the sale should close. And if you want to be part of it, now's the time to get in. And if we can get that kind of thing happening, along with, we're doing the same thing with our other incentive program. So I would be in favor of finding a way to knock down some of those costs, sewer and stormwater, I'm in agreement there, but just something that gives that incentive to say, okay, you can build these anywhere you want, but when they start building in an established neighborhood, they're going to build something, for the most part, especially in Colchester and Essex Center, that fits the street that they're on, and you will actually get that attainable home. You won't be getting, you know, the half-million-dollar home on a street that has a bunch of $250,000 homes, for the most part. That happens, you know, out on the lake, people are just buying property, and it doesn't matter if you're right next to an old cottage, they're still building their, the house that they've always wanted. But that's not going to happen on Sidham. It's not going to happen on Moran. Those kinds of things, those are the places we want that infill. So I think having some incentive for that is a great idea. Keep people looking here, keep them building here and moving to Essex. So I appreciate the report, and I think we should move forward with determining how far council wants to go, have the public open house, and take the steps necessary to move this forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else in council?
Thank you very much for the report, Laurie. Very good report, and I think we'll have to have, moving forward, we'll probably have to have a public meeting again on this for a public input. Go ahead.
Through your worship, I think direction in terms of how council wants to head on this, and, you know, to be a little bit of the, I guess, wet blanket, you know, in terms of incentivizing is great, but council really has to understand that this money's got to come from somewhere, right? Regardless if it's 50% incentivization, 10%, I mean, this is money that isn't in your budget. It's not in your future budget as of now, so I'm not sure how you guys want to look at that. Before getting into a public meeting, noting that you're moving ahead with it, you know, maybe it requires a special meeting to talk about these costs and where they're coming from, albeit, I know, as Laurie noted, are all 132 going to build in the next year? I'd love it, probably not, but that money still has to come from somewhere that's not projected currently. So I think it's great. I think it's a great idea. You just have to make sure that you incorporate that in your budget plans moving forward, and, you know, the whole, if it's coming from Peter, then Paul's going to pay up, kind of thing. So it's just something to consider for council before you move already to do this. Whether there's a step in between for you guys, it might be something to consider.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion that we have Mr. Morrison take a look at how we could finance covering the development charges on the town-wide development charges that we charge out. If we were to forego those on 132 units, it wouldn't be something that would have to be taken out of our budget and put into, like, okay, here's the pool of money, let's start pulling from it. But to somehow maybe fund it, I'll leave it up to Mr. Morrison how he wants to figure that out, but I would like to suggest that we do it from our own reserves, because we're going to pay back into it as we get taxes back. And I know there's monies out there that we have in reserves that we don't have to have right away, but, but again, I'll leave it up to Mr. Morrison. But for Mr. Morrison to come back with a report on how we would fund just the, if we were to give back just the development charges other than wastewater and water development charges on these 132 units, if we wanted to move forward, and then have a discussion at that point in time as to whether we want to move forward with it or not.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is that your motion? Okay, do we have a support? We have a seconder on that motion? Counselor Bondi. Any further discussion on that motion? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and if that comes back really costly, at the very least, could we still, again, look... at, that if we don't want to fund all of the infill properties, can we just looking, can we just look at waiving the second set of development fees on one property? That, that's zoned or even in the future zone? So we have somebody that wants to build, somebody wants to buy three infill lots in Colchester and make three duplexes, and, and they look great, we love them, and they're all zoned. Can we look at that house only, that building having only one set of development fees? Because really, what is that costing us? It's one property, we're going to collect one set of development fees anyway, and we're going to get two homes. So I think that that needs to be a part of, part of it too. Because that's the intensification part that I would really still like to...
Thank you. Jeff, did you have a comment on this?
Through the chair, I just wanted to make a couple, uh, a couple points that the payback period is mentioned by Deputy Mayor Malasch. We use that for commercial, multi-res, and the affordable housing model. The reason it fits so perfectly there is that we had one for each one of those at that time. Um, and we knew that the limit on our exposure in that model would be capped at, I think on the commercial side, it was 14 possibly. So it was a small group. Because dealing with 132, we'd have to create that model for every single one of those administratively. Um, I think it would be a burden on that side. But I can come up with a model that may work better for the situation, so I appreciate the flexibility in doing so.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Okay, on the motion, all in favor? The motion opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Through, uh, Laurie, for the presentation.
8.5 on the agenda is Capital Works and Infrastructure Report 2020-01. Results of Request for Tender for 2020 Essex Water Main Improvements. For receipt, and that council awards the request for tender to Nevin Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,888,055.04, including non-refundable HST.
Have a mover, please, on this one? Counselor Van der Doolen and Counselor B. Arkman. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Did you have a question?
I'm sorry, counselor, go ahead.
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So we have quite a bit of a surplus after this project. Can we use that on another road project?
Go ahead.
Uh, through your worship, I'm going to take this one, I, I think, in terms of, it's something I, actually, it's something that the team picked up on, on both of the following reports. The budget value, um, covers more than what you see in terms of what's been tendered. So that budget price includes engineering and includes potential any contingencies. As well, especially with the Water Main Project, you have user-pay monies and not user-pay money. So that if there are savings in the user-pay with, with respect to the water or even the storm, it goes back to the water and the storm pot. It doesn't open it up to use on roads and whatnot. So, uh, at this point, especially with it being one of the first projects in the year, it would be wise to sit on this, uh, to ensure that it covers any contingencies, covers the engineering. And if there are other capital projects that are, um, maybe that go over, then we might have to come back with a report to say, we might need money that, that's a little bit extra here to cover those, so that your net budget remains unaffected. So, not all that meets the eye, I guess, that way. It's something we need to do a better job moving forward, clarifying in our report.
I think that's a great idea, since, I mean, we had a good budget, but it was squeaky tight, and there was some nervousness about not having any, any room to maneuver, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
8.6, CAO Report 2020-02 Municipal Modernization Program. Intake one for consulting services. And this is together with a request to council to waive requirements pursuant to Section 22 of the procurement bylaw. For receipt, and that council appoints Strategy Corp. to provide consulting services to perform internal and shared service delivery review for the town.
Get a mover, please. Counselor B. Arkman, Counselor Van der Doolen, any questions on this one? All in favor? Oh? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see that we have tight timelines, but with the virus that's here, is the consultant going to be hands-on? Like, is this going to, is the province going to give us any, any, any leeway for the tight timelines? That's, that's one of the questions I have. And also, is council going to have any role in this? Like, are we going to have, like, a high-level meeting saying, okay, well, we see that this other municipality does this well, you know, maybe we want to do this? You know, we see that, like, is there any opportunity for council to have a meeting as well with Strategy Corp.?
Uh, through your worship, uh, as far as the tight timelines, that's acknowledged. And I think, uh, part of the delays came with, uh, dealing with joint projects, and, and then Amisburg got their funding after ours, but they already had their RFP selected. So I would, I would assume that there are going to be some flexibilities in those timelines. However, the consultant is taking it on, acknowledging that they are going to meet the deadlines in front of them. So, um, I guess I'll steam ahead that way. Uh, with respect to council involvement, um, you know, it really becomes an internal, external, uh, service delivery review. Uh, I think there's going to be an opportunity for council to interject, and, and when you get into what's that level of service that council wants, um, there will definitely be correspondence throughout this program. So there's going to be some give and take back with council that way. To what level at this point, I'm not sure, but...
Any else over here? Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Thank you, through your worship. Um, through, through, um, your worship to, um, our CAO, Mr. Napsy. Uh, I know that we're doing this in conjunction, it sounds like, with Amisburg, but are there any other communities in the county that were taking advantage of this program? And, um, is there any further consolidation that we can do with other communities?
So, through your worship, our tender has always been to look at, uh, any type of regional partnerships that we can. So our, our RFP and our scope of work includes exploring shared services, uh, you know, with the county and with our neighbors. Uh, the reason that, I guess, we're not really partnering with Amisburg, what it was noted was they already had their RFP and their proponents selected. And to save time and, and, um, you know, when you have somebody looking at those shared services, it made sense to use the same consultant that way. So, uh, they're doing their own review, internal, external. We're doing our own review, internal, external. There's going to be overlap for sure, uh, not just with Amisburg, but with our regional partners that way, county and elsewise. I believe, um, Leamington is looking to do the same thing. They were successful in, in the, the funds as well, and I, and I believe they're looking to, uh, move the same direction that we have that way.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie.
8.7, Parks and Facilities Report 2020-01. Results of Request for Tender Essex Splash Pad Wash and Change Room Upgrade. For receipt, and that council awards the request for tender to 2519181Ontario, Inc., operating as Preston Construction, in the amount of $151,009,0256, including non-refundable HST.
Mover, please. Counselor Garen, second. Deputy Mayor Malasch, any questions? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I do support this, and I am hoping that Harrow gets a bathroom at some point too, because we've had our splash pad, I think, a little longer. And I've measured the distance from where the Portageon is at the Harrow Splash Pad to the bathrooms, and I've measured the distance while I've had help measuring the distance from the Essex Splash Pad to the arena. And I believe they're pretty equal, if not Harrow might be a little bit farther. So, um, just, you know, hopefully council does support a bathroom at some point at the, the Harrow Splash Pad. It's, it is, it's, um, it is challenging having a couple of young kids, and, you know, if you've got swim diapers on and you're a mom or dad or a sitter all by yourself and you're dragging kids around to the arena bathrooms. So I'm happy to see this, in that it came in under budget, and maybe some of that budget, if it doesn't all go over, can be earmarked towards the Harrow one.
Deputy Mayor Malasch.
Thank you, through your worship. And I think too, the, the situation here that, um, with Essex was that they had an existing building already, because there was a pool where the splash pad exists right now. So the building already existed, it's not like we had to put up a structure, um, which we would have to do in Harrow. So this was much easier to do, and I think that's the reason why we looked at this one first. Therefore, the dollars, I, I would say the dollars here, uh, to put up a, a new washroom facility, even just a washroom facility without change rooms, would be at least this much money. Because when we looked at the washrooms at the Harrow Fair grounds, um, those were like astronomical price compared to even what we're talking about here. So I, that's, we weren't trying to slate anybody here, if, if, um, is what I wanted to point out, um, was that, uh, there just happened to be a building here for us to renovate, so it makes it a lot easier in Essex Center.
Counselor Garen.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Sweet, um, projected timeline on this, if you know, with everything that's going on, I know that might be a change to what you think, but...
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. As council may recall, this was tendered last year. Um, so once it's awarded, we'd expect it to go as soon as possible, considering certain dates, Fun Fest, for example. Um, and just to also, to add on, if I may, so council's aware, the total project budget was 234, includes kind of three projects. First project is the washrooms. Second project is to repair the flat roof, and the funding there is to demolish two of the sides, um, which aren't needed. So that's what that total project is, and the other two tenders are currently out. And for Counselor Bondi, um, the Harrow Splash Pad Washroom is in the forecast for next year's budget. And Deputy Mayor is correct, the reason this happened is council of the day had put this project in two phases, the actual splash pad one year, the washroom facility the second year.
Further, um, so Doug, at budget, there was some talk, um, about summer res, concerns with shade and possibly some park equipment. Uh, is there any more on that right now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are looking for shade structures in all our parks, but next year for this location as well, there is some funding for that, and we have a local service club that's also interesting partner with, for shading. In terms of playground, that is something on our, our list that we want playground in that area. Um, I think council's aware, we may look at moving one playground in the future. Um, we're kind of looking for status and how we move further in development of the properties.
All in favor? Carrie.
Item 10, any updates from county council?
Richard, do you have anything?
Uh, through your worship, I'll just, I'll just mention a couple of things here that, um, like, so we've got a few things coming up on the agenda for Wednesday night. One of them's about, about stretchers for our, um, ambulances, which is quite a large expenditure. But it's to ensure that our ambulance, I want to be careful how I say this, our paramedics are, um, protected against hurting themselves. And we, we spend a lot of money on these stretchers, so to the tune of $900,000 is what we're going to be spending. But some of the cost is covered by, uh, the province, obviously, and our partner in the region, the city of Windsor. But, uh, that's one of the big items for this, uh, coming, um, evening. Also, we're going to be talking about the, uh, the Essex County Library and how their lease agreement works with the civic, and at the civic center. And, um, a couple of interesting and contentious items there for, um, for Wednesday night. But other than that, there's nothing specific to, uh, the town of Essex. Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to have a roundtable discussion too about the coronavirus, so that, that, that's going to be an issue Wednesday, so we're probably going to discuss that. And through the mayors and deputy mayors, they're, uh, probably going to come up with a plan that all municipalities get on board with. So, thank you.
11.1 on the agenda, correspondence for receipt. And then, Mr. Mayor, we, uh, we can do them all, and then we have, uh, 11.2.1 for receipt or receipt in support. So we could do the, if it's wish of council, we can, uh, receive the first couple pieces.
All in favor of the correspondence here? Or, or any questions?
Need a mover?
I need a mover. Okay, uh, Counselor Van der Doolen and Counselor B. Arkman. All in favor? And comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I just, uh, I'm the town representative on Union Water, and I just wanted to point out that this report basically indicates that we had another year of flawless water supply from both Union Water and our own plant in, uh, on the lake. And, uh, we did have that one boil water last, uh, September 17th, but I just wanted to bring council up to speed that although they never found out the cause of that, um, so-called contaminated, uh, sample, uh, it was never in the water. So there was a boil water advisory, but they're almost certain that it was just a, it was a sampling error. Somebody put a dirty thumb in the, in the vial or something. So they never found, they never found any coliform in the drinking water at all. I just wanted to drive that home. Thank you.
Yeah, counselor, it was probably in the handling of the sample, so... Okay, thank you.
11.2.1, correspondence for receipt or receipt in support, that the correspondence from the Essex County Federation of Agriculture, asking for council's support of Bill 156, uh, be received or received and supported, and if so supported, uh, that the appropriate letter of support be sent.
Uh, receive and support. Counselor Van der Doolen, a second. Counselor B. Arkman. Any questions on this one? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Item 12, that the committee minutes listed be in the Heritage Committee minutes from November 28, 19, and the Committee of Adjustment minutes from October 15, 2019, be approved and adopted as circulated.
Mover, please. Counselor Garen and Counselor Van der Doolen. Any questions on Counselor Garen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering why, like, some of the other committee, um, meetings minutes aren't in, in this report, such as Fun Fest or BIA or whatever.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. We, as they come in, and they come in on a, on a different, you know, various ruling basis, but as they come in, we put them on for the agenda. They, uh, I, I would have to check, there, there might be one or two sets of recent minutes that just missed our agenda deadline and are probably slated to come to the April 6 meeting. Uh, but generally, as they come in, uh, we push them through to the agenda.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Item 13, uh, financial, January 2020 Bank Payments Report, that the bank payments reports, uh, so specified, be ratified as submitted.
Mover, please, Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor B. Arkman. All in favor? Thank you.
As stated during adoption of agenda, the notices of motion originally scheduled for consideration tonight have been deferred to the April 6 meeting. Uh, that brings us, Mr. Mayor, to item 16, any reports and announcements from council members.
Counselor Bondi. Counselor Van der Doolen.
Good.
I have nothing. Uh, Deputy Mayor Malasch. Counselor Garen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to congratulate Essex Ravens Football and Glenn Mills. Ravens Football was awarded, uh, Team of the Year at the Westby Awards, and Coach Mills got Coach of the Year, so I want to give a shout-out to them guys.
Thank you. Counselor Verbeek. Counselor B. Arkman. Nothing? Okay, thank you.
Item 17, bylaws. 1893 for third reading this evening to confirm the proceedings from the March 2nd regular council meeting.
Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor B. Arkman. All in favor? Carrie.
17.2, bylaws that require first, second, and third and final reading. 1895 to appoint a drainage superintendent for the town of Essex.
Mover, please, Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Garen. All in favor? Carrie.
Bylaw 1897 to authorize an agreement between, uh, the Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, and the Corporation of the Town of Essex, and this is in regards to the Rural Economic Program Grant to complete the Essex Center and Harrow Center streetscape plans.
Mover, please, Deputy Mayor Malasch and Counselor B. Arkman. All in favor? Carrie.
And then, as added to the agenda during adoption and published agenda, as agenda item 17.2.3, we have bylaw 1901 being a bylaw to appoint an acting deputy treasurer for the town of Essex, namely that Heather McDonald shall be appointed as acting deputy treasurer for the town for the term of May, for the term of March 16, 2020, ending May 31, 2020. And this appointment is being so made pursuant to Section 227 of the municipal... And this appointment is being so made pursuant to Section 227 of the Municipal Act and Section 286.2 of the Municipal Act, which provides that a municipality may appoint deputy treasurers who shall have all the powers and deputies of the treasurer under this and any other act. And it's proposed for three readings this evening.
I need a mover. Counselor Van der Dolen and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions? All in favor? Carrie.
And then for two readings this evening, 1898 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of this March 16, 2020 regular council meeting.
Mover, please. Deputy, or Counselor B. Arkman and Counselor Guerin. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Need a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor B. Arkman, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. And thanks for the people in the audience to come out tonight. It's always nice to see you.